In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the Education Administration building, as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record, Jersey Journal, and district website.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Dandetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second. Call the roll. Discussion. Sorry, is that a discussion on that? No, just call the roll, sorry.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Dedetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Showcase.
Good evening, everyone. It is our favorite time of the month. I would encourage our elementary principals to please come up to the podium and introduce their student of the staff member of the month.
Good evening. I'm Rob L- of Huber Street School. Lucas Pagan. Lucas Pagan, yeah, let's hear it. I'm gonna go back in time a little bit. Lucas Pagan was playing shortstop for his little league team. The ball was hit to him. He scooped the ball up and made a fantastic play. The umpire called the batter out. The next thing I witnessed was Lucas correcting the umpire and saying, I didn't tag him. He was safe. Now, mind you, Lucas is a tremendous baseball player who loves to win. The umpire made the wrong call in Lucas's favor. Knowing the play could have hurt his own team, Lucas told the truth. Without hesitation, he did the right thing. That's Lucas Pagan. Honest, smart, talented. Yes, all of those things. But Lucas is good. He's a good person. That's how he is on the ball field, in the classroom, on our playground, everywhere. Lucas is a role model for our younger students and a tremendous young man. It is my pleasure to introduce the Huber Street School Student of the Month for March, fifth grader Lucas Pagan. So before I begin speaking about the Huber Street School Faculty Member of the Month, about a half an hour ago when I walked into the auditorium, I was greeted with an amazing wave by one of my first graders and his dad. And he called me over just to tell me how much he loves Lorraine Frank. And without further ado, the Huber Street School Teacher of the Month is Mrs. Lorraine Frank. Mrs. Frank is a lot of things. For starters, she's a tremendous teacher. Mrs. Frank is rooted in the old school but simultaneously embraces the new school approach too. Mrs. Frank is caring, she loves her students, and often acts as a protective mom for our faculty. Lorraine Frank is funny, and I mean really funny. She is witty, clever, and just has tremendous comedic timing. More than anything, Lorraine Frank is a North Star, a moral compass for Huber Street School. She's a compassionate, genuinely good person who leads by example, is always honest, and someone who gives sage advice to keep us all moving in the right direction. Mrs. Frank has a heart the size of a Secaucus. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce the Huber Street School Teacher of the Month for March, Huber Street School's North Star, Mrs. Lorraine Frank.
So I'm gonna do just something a little bit different. I usually write everything myself, and I promise I didn't steal it from somewhere. I took it from a teacher who nominated our Student of the Month, and I'm just the principal, but if a teacher wrote something about me, I really can't remember my principles from all my years ago, but I can remember teachers that made a difference, and I know Ms. Preese is somebody who makes a difference to our Student of the Month. There is one, and these are her words. "Zenden Thasser is the definition of not only a wonderful student but a wonderful person. There is one word that pops into my head when I think of Zenden, and that word is kindness. In the past seven years, I have met, taught, and taken care of many children from the ages of one to ten, and I can honestly say that Zenden is one of the kindest children I know. Zenden spreads her kindness not because she wants to be rewarded, but because she does it out of pure kindness of heart. I have seen Zenden give up her bucket filler ticket, which if you don't know at Claridan School, they are literally gold, to a friend because her friend was upset that she didn't get one. On her birthday, Zenden brought in a gift for not only her classmates but an actual gift for Ms. Preese. The gift wasn't something small either, it was a teacher bag. I don't know any other child who's happy to give out gifts on their own birthday. Whenever someone gets a point on their prize card, Zenden stands up and claps for that person. Zenden is always the first person willing to help anyone and everyone who needs it in any situation. Every single day, Zenden comes into the classroom with the biggest smile on her face. Her positivity shines in everything that she does. And Zenden, on my behalf, you are all these things and more. I mean, I got a shout-out just walking in, and that made me really happy. Nobody shouts me out when I walk in. And that is clear to me every time I have the pleasure of seeing you in the hallways, in class, on the playground, and especially all your help in the lunchroom. Thank you for being such an amazing role model to others. Congratulations, Zenden. Come up for your award." And Ms. Preese, you come up too. Come on. Our staff member of the month could not be here tonight, but it is our head custodian, Ed Sinisi. Yes. Ed does have a fan club, yes, we love Ed. We literally could not get along, like literally, without Ed Sinisi. I know I speak on behalf of all of Claridan, whether it's parents, the PTA, myself, my teachers, when I say how much respect we have for him and how much we love and appreciate all his hard work, and so I'll give this to him tomorrow and he will like very humbly be like, "Oh, thank you." Okay, but he's the best. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Each month, we have the privilege of recognizing a student who embodies the values of our school community and sets an inspiring example for their peers. This month is my honor to announce that Sanaya Green has been selected as our March Secaucus Middle School Patriot of the Month. Sanaya has demonstrated commitment to excellence both inside and outside of the classroom. She is not only a dedicated student but also a compassionate and empathetic individual who goes above and beyond to support her fellow classmates. She leads by example, demonstrating kindness and respect in all of her interactions. Please join me in congratulating Sanaya on this well-deserved honor. She is a shining example of the incredible potential that exists within each and every one of our students, and we are so proud to have her as a member of our middle school community. Congratulations, Sanaya. I also have the privilege of honoring an individual whose dedication, hard work, and positive attitude truly makes a difference in our school community. I am thrilled to announce that Mrs. Maria Rodriguez has been selected as the Secaucus Middle School March Staff Member of the Month. She consistently goes she consistently goes above and beyond in her role, demonstrating exceptional professionalism, kindness, and commitment to our school's mission and values. She embodies the spirit of teamwork and collaboration, always willing to lend a helping hand and support her colleagues. She brings enthusiasm, creativity, and a wealth of knowledge to everything she does, inspiring all those around her to strive for excellence. Whether it's her dedication to mentoring and guiding students or her role as a trusted and respected colleague, she demonstrates a commitment to making a positive impact in our school. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Rodriguez for this well-deserved recognition. Her contributions enrich the lives of our students, and we are truly blessed to have her in our school. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Vergiani, Principal of Secaucus High School. Tonight I have two students that we're recognizing. Mia Cruz is our First Student of the Month at Secaucus High School. She was competing in a championship basketball game last month, so she's a February Student of the Month. Mia is the epitome of a well-rounded high school student. Not only does she dominate the basketball court with her exceptional skills, earning her the title of First Team All-Division Player, but she also leads the class of two thousand and twenty-four with determination as their president. Despite her numerous achievements, Mia remains humble and approachable, always ready to lend a helping hand to friends or offer words of encouragement to her teammates. Her supportive nature fosters a sense of camaraderie among her classmates, making her a standout athlete and leader within our school community. She will be graduating in June with the seal of biliteracy insignia on her diploma, which means she is fluid in two languages. And Mia, I've been your principal for eight years, right? We started over at Claridan together for four years and four years at High School. It was my pleasure to be your principal for all that time. Mia, congratulations. And the March Student of the Month is Gensi Duraku. Gensi is a polite and mature young man who has shown great leadership qualities throughout his high school career. Despite a demanding academic workload, he has consistently maintained top performance in his classes while actively engaging in various extracurricular pursuits. Gensi maintains a positive outlook on his academic endeavors, personal goals, and future aspirations. He serves as President of the Junior State of America Chapter and was an incredible help in planning their annual Washington, DC trip. And he is a key member of our nationally ranked chapter. In addition to his involvement in clubs and organizations, Gensi is also viewed as a leader for the cross-country team. Gensi's unwavering dedication and leadership abilities make him a valuable asset to our school community, and I just learned recently, and I'm not sure if you committed yet, but he was accepted into Purdue University. Congratulations, Gensi. And the Secaucus High School Teacher of the Month is Mr. Medina. He will be completing his fourth year as a history teacher at Secaucus High School. His lessons always promise to be thoughtful and engaging, and he does not shy away from discussing high-stakes topics that are meaningful to his students. He first took on this challenge as the JSA advisor when he incorporated what is now called Critical Conversations. This school-wide event provides students with a structured and safe platform to delve into important social issues. His contributions extend far beyond the classroom. As the JSA advisor, he recently organized a very successful trip to Washington, DC, providing his students an opportunity to participate in what's called Winter Congress. Furthermore, he is the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Six co-advisor, where he is currently preparing for the Easter Bunny Breakfast, which will take place on Saturday. Despite his already packed schedule, Mr. Medina also dedicates his time as the wrestling coach and the track and field coach. His involvement in both academic and extracurricular activities underscores his dedication to the overall development and success of our students. And even though Mr. Medina's at a board meeting tonight, if he goes home right after this, it would be early for him. Congratulations, Mr. Medina.
Student representative?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've all been well since our last meeting. At the high school, we currently have our spring sports beginning. Let's happy students to participate in sports once again, or for the first time. Our spring musical, The Addams Family, was a success with over three hundred tickets sold for each show, and we received a lot of great reviews from it. The High School Band Play-A-Thon will be on Monday, March twenty-fifth, and will last from six to nine PM right here in the pack. The Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Five will be having its first-ever karaoke fundraiser at Charlie's Corner on Friday, March twenty-second, from six to nine PM. All proceeds will go to that class's project graduation. Finally, the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Six will be hosting the annual Breakfast with the Easter Bunny this Saturday, March twenty-third, at nine AM here at the high school. Thank you.
Paige, you did a great job in the play this weekend, last weekend. Great job. Yes, I wanted to say that as well. Paige, Grandma, you did a great job. The Addams Family cast was just amazing. You know, I mean, it was just unbelievable. You guys, every year, you do better and better. So, great job. Great job, Paige. Yes, great job. We are going to forego our ethics training this month in an effort to keep the meeting moving. I know we were late, and we have to go back into exec session after this, so we are going to skip that for this month. Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, superintendent's report?
All right, good evening, everyone. So it has been a very exciting month at Secaucus Public Schools. Last Tuesday, Governor Murphy visited Millridge and Claridan schools and informed us that we were awarded the preschool expansion aid. With the preschool expansion aid, we will now be able to offer full-day pre-K to many of our families in Secaucus. We encourage families to complete the pre-registration form to be included in our lottery for the upcoming school year. As we know with anything from the state, it is a trickle bit of information coming down, so as we get more information, it will be communicated to the families, anything we receive from the DOE. So we're still waiting on further clarification as to the logistics of what that's gonna look like. Additionally, our redistricting committee has been established, and all members have been notified. Thank you to all the parents, guardians, and teachers who expressed their interest in being part of the committee. Our first scheduled meeting will be held on April eleventh. After we meet, updates will be provided at upcoming board meetings as far as the progress. Additionally, in Conjunction Ramapo College, we apply for, it's called the NOICE STEM Grant, and we received slightly over one million dollars in this grant. This grant will provide additional opportunities for our students within the STEM field to assist our district in hiring qualified STEM teachers in the future as well. Furthermore, I would also like to congratulate Ms. Ella Cruz and her students on an amazing performance. I was here on Friday, and to say that you could hear a pin drop, everybody was captivated by the performance. And lastly, I would like to acknowledge Ms. Wargaki, Ms. La for being chosen as panelists for the New Jersey Principal and Supervisor Association's Women Leadership Conference. Leadership Conference. Their representation at the conference is a testament of their commitment to leadership education in our district. Their specific presentation was in the largest conference hall, and it was sold out. So, it was an exceptional performance from what I heard. And that is it for my report as far as HIB. So, we have zero reports at Claritin. We have one confirmed at Huber Street, zero at Secaucus Middle School, and two confirmed reports at Secaucus High School.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, bullying findings as reported by the superintendent and are available at the administrative offices for review.
Check it.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
I vote yes to all the items. I vote no to the HIB at the high school, the second HIB at the high school. I vote no. Everything else, I'm a yes.
That's correct. Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Don't forget me, Grace.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. Oh, I'm so sorry, Christina.
I vote yes. I vote yes to everything and no to the second HIB from the high school.
Business Administrator Board Secretary report?
Yes, I do have a report tonight. Tonight, under governance, we will be tabling Resolution R. 1.11, and we will be adding to the agenda Resolution R. 1.22, which reads, "Be it resolved by the Secaucus Board of Education, herein referred to as the Board as follows. The Board hereby approves the request for a personal leave of absence without pay through April 30th, 2024 by employee number 5102, whose name is on file in the superintendent's office. The Board hereby approves the resignation of said employee effective April 30th, 2024. And the terms, stipulations, and conditions of the settlement agreement annexed to this resolution are hereby adopted and approved by the Board of Education. The Board President and Business Administrator Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to execute the attached settlement of agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate same." In addition to that, under Operations, we will be tabling Resolution R. 5.12, and we will be adding Resolution R. 5.14, approval for the Business Administrator to withdraw funds from the Maintenance Reserve account in the amount of $250,000, and Resolution R. 5.15, approval to enter into a contract with Montclair Speech Therapy Pending Attorney Review. And finally, tonight, the Board will be voting on Resolution R. 5.04, approval of the tentative 2425 school budget, which will be submitted tomorrow to the County Superintendent for approval. All programs will remain intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Governance? Oh, I'm sorry. Public Forum?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the school district. This is the public forum regarding agenda items. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing items listed for approval on this agenda only. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The Board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the Board will not respond to comments regarding students or Board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the Board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during the public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the Board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has been first brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Tracy Roomit? Yes, it does. So, Stephen, Tracy and I will be emailed back and forth. I know what her concern is that she wants to speak on. It will be discussed in Abby's Education Committee report, so should she come up after that? It's an agenda item question. It is, so it's now? Okay. Yeah, she was hoping to hear what was said and then comment on that. Is that a possibility or no? Okay. And we can speak after, so?
I wasn't, yeah, I was prepared to kind of respond to you, but, okay.
You can also come back if you choose at the second public session.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I signed both because I didn't really know which, but I have a few things. So, I spoke to, or I wrote to Kelly this afternoon, thinking that the meeting was actually tomorrow. I was unaware that it was today. So, I have some notes prepared. I don't have everything in a speech format, so I'll just use what I have. So, I'll begin with saying good evening to everybody. I'd like to begin by also congratulating everyone involved in the Addams Family production, which included my daughter, who's actually celebrating with her Addams Family family. And Paige, I know that you're here, and you're missing out on that, so I admire that a lot. And congratulations to you, because you did a fabulous job as well. I'd also like to congratulate and recognize the sixth-grade girls' travel basketball team, who won their championship, as well as the seventh-grade boys and the eighth-grade boys for winning their division title. Kudos to the kids and coaches on a well-deserved win. So, that, to me, deserves recognition. The focus of today is to revisit the actionable items my daughter Addison and I spoke about at the board meeting last February 2023. Though there have been a few email correspondences since then with Dr. Alfonso and a couple of members of the Board, I'd like to know if any progress has been made regarding the Media Center or library situation, as well as the lack of presence of physical books in the classrooms. I have some data that supports how the use of physical books versus reading on a digital device is more advantageous with regards to learning. So, I will be reading some data. According to Marian Wolf, who happens to be a Harvard scholar and the Director of the Center for Dyslexia, Diverse Learners, and Social Justice at the UCLA Graduate School of Education and Information Studies, and she's also a neuroscientist, she asserts that the physicality of the book encourages a deeper meaning. The screen gives us a lot of information more quickly, but what happens is skimming, word spotting, browsing, scrolling, and in that act, it actually disadvantages the slower, deeper processing of language that print advantages us for. The brain handles reading differently when they are using different devices. Please keep in mind that the brain is still developing well beyond elementary school and even past high school. So, this is true at all levels in education for us. Print offers advantages to deep reading processes, such as empathy, perspective-taking, critical analysis, and also understanding authentic information and misinformation, which in today's day and age is very important. And it also benefits fluency, so how a child reads and how they sound when they're reading. She goes on to discuss that we have data from 0 to 20 that our children, adolescents, and young adults comprehend better in sequencing details of the plot, et cetera, when they are reading the same material on print versus screen. Not to say that there aren't advantages of screen reading, but again, we need a true balance, and I think that's lacking in our schools. Let's see. Screen reading gives us access to a lot of information, and while that sounds like a positive, it's sometimes not, because it also offers distractions. There's online access, and there's things that kids can go on, like YouTube and so on, and so it actually acts as a distraction. The screen can be made bigger and brighter, and some people might actually just prefer this medium. I just don't think that print books should be done away with. They should actually be normalized instead of being treated like it's a trend that we are no longer following. What else did I want to add? The purpose of print reading versus the purpose of digital reading. Digital reading is good for quick reading, like if you wanted to look something up quickly, so on and so forth, but if you want a true connection, a deeper meaning, connection with a book, then you actually need to be holding the book in your hands. So, another topic is overstimulation. Students will always feel bored when they are done using a digital device, then if they work with print books, because digital devices are overstimulating them with novelty, because the screen is over-exciting, thus leaving them wanting more of this. And I think we see that a lot in our children. What are the implications? What happens if we raise a generation of online skimmers instead of deep readers? I don't think that would bode very well. I know, as a reading specialist myself, I've been in education for 23 years. I think that the advantages completely outweigh the disadvantages of reading print material versus reading everything online. My daughters come home and they report to me that they've done all their work online on their Chromebooks, that she's reading The Crucible off of a PDF online. There might be books in a closet somewhere that teachers can go get, but my nephew has reported that those books are in awful condition. So, I would like for that to change, so that there's access to books that are in good condition and that are actually accessible to our students. Let's see. She also mentions, "We must not let go of deep reading as one of the major goals and aspirations of our young children. The hope is to maybe create a biliterate brain eventually. Maybe we can get really good at reading both online and print, but it needs to start with print reading first." Just, I'm almost finished. I wanted to say a lot just in case. So, I said, I also wrote down, I've spoken to other parents, some who are here today, to district supervisors. I spoke to a counselor. I've been in touch with teachers and a principal in district, and the consensus is that they agree that print books need to be normalized again and to be the main resource. In fact, just today, a teacher in district expressed to me that he thinks students do learn better from physical books. My recommendation is to perhaps send out a survey to teachers, students, and parents, ask them what they prefer, and I think that this will be very telling. This kind of communication would also be nice for transparency, as you would be taking the voices of your school community into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Governance?
Okay. Under governance, we discussed new hires, some of which will be obtained with the pre-K grant money. There were job description revisions and some coaching appointments. I'd also like to make note that the tabling of R. 1.11 is for the purposes of reviewing reorganizations, so that we can ensure that we are delivering the best services for our students. And under policy, we had many policies modified and updated. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 1.01 through R. 1.22, and Motion M. 1.01.
Check it.
We need to table Resolution R.
Oh, I thought I mentioned that before. Okay. And tabling R. 1.11. And I'd like to make a motion to table R. 1.11.
Check it.
And Ms. Shaw, if you would call a separate resolution on the tabling motion?
We'll do that one first.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
For the rest is, Mr. Bartletta?
Should we have discussion first?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to point out that this agenda has changed a few times, and it was published and then changed, so I apologize for that being up there. And I think it's also important to note that the assistant principal position at the middle school, it's not not being filled. So, it is still a position that will stay active, correct? It's just at this time, we're not proceeding with an appointment for that, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes, I have to abstain from R. 1.04.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Policy?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 2.01 through R. 2.22, as described below.
Discussion?
A second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Education?
Okay. The Education Committee started with a brief review and approval of field trips. We reviewed the disposal of outdated IT equipment, which included some older Chromebooks, monitors, and projectors that have either sustained irreparable damage, or have been deemed end-of-life, or have exceeded their value. Going forward, a rationale for disposal will be included for each item. We discussed New Teacher Academy, which will take place on March 24th. The Supervisor of Council, Christina Wiswasser, will be presenting on the best ways to communicate with families and parents. April is Autism Acceptance Month. T-shirts will be donated for our Autism Acceptance fundraiser this year. These shirts will be available for purchase, and the money raised will be donated to Secaucus-based social enterprise Spectrum Works, an organization which employs and empowers individuals with autism. We discussed SAT prep options, and will provide an update in the future. We discussed At Your Service. Students have been invited to attend Univision Studios in honor of Autism Acceptance Month. This will take place in mid-April, and our students will be exposed to various experiences in media and broadcasting. There was a discussion about middle school to-add cycle classes, which include art for sixth and seventh grade, and Intro to Theater for eighth grade. This opportunity will be exposing students to different areas of the arts to help them pursue their interests further in high school. And one extra thing discussed was books. We discussed establishing a collection of classroom studied novels for student access in the Media Center. These are tangible items, not only PDFs, and reintroducing novels into classrooms district-wide. I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve and adopt Resolution R. 3.01 through R. 3.02, as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Operations Finance?
I'd like to make a motion to table R. 5.12.
Second.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Deidetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Giombray?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
I gotta pull up my script, Grace. On Resolution R. 5.01, approval of the check register, I recuse myself from the payment to Read Academy and...
Just to table.
I'm just tabling that, and then I'm gonna vote that. Table, yes, correct.
Hold that speech for two minutes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. At our finance meeting this month, we discussed an approval to accept a donation of IT equipment valued at $1,800 to be used throughout the district. We also approved the agreement... We also approved the agreement with City Cruises for our senior class trip. Another approval is, we approved the tri-op sports agreement with Hoboken High School and Weehawken High School for our hockey program for next year and the year after. And more importantly, I'd like to congratulate Grace on all her hard work with the budget. It was a monumental task, and you did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now I gotta get this right. I'd like to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R 5.01 through R 5.11 and R 5.13 to R 5.15. There we go. I got it.
Second.
Discussion? Nobody?
I have something to say regarding R 5.09. So we are terminating, and actually together, R 5.08 and R 5.09. We have decided to terminate our tri-op agreement with the Carney-North Arlington program. We thought that that was the best decision for the longevity of the program. A lot of thought and consideration went into that, and I know a lot of parents reached out to us by way of email. And once we were able to come together and vote on this item, we will be responding back to the parent emails with an explanation that goes into a little bit more detail. And also regarding R 5.09, we are also entering into an agreement for discussions for a middle school hockey team as well. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes to everything, but I'd like to recuse myself from R 5.08 and R 5.09.
Mr. Deombrae?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
On resolution R 5.01, approval of the check register, I recuse myself from the payment to Read Academy and vote yes on all other resolutions.
Thank you.
I got excited.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Buildings and grounds?
All right, on our buildings and grounds meeting for this month, we got an update on all the work orders throughout the district by our maintenance director. Everything is in working order, doing... We have some highlights throughout the district. Huber Street School has a number of roof leaks. They are being coordinated to be fixed. There is some solar panels that are on the roof that have to be removed in order to get the leak fixed, so that's something that Sal has on his plate to work on. In Clarida School, the long-awaited emergency generator is finally in, hooked up, and it will be tested over the April break. There will be gym floor repairs in the gym, and that'll be done over spring break. There's a bulging area, so that'll be done and fixed.
At Clarida. You didn't say where.
No, I didn't say where. That's at Clarida. More roof leaks at the middle school and high school that'll be repaired. And that's pretty much it. So I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R 6.01.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Deombrae?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ad hoc, shared services, I don't think there's anything to report for shared services. No legislation. Athletics?
We did not have a meeting this month, but I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments from our winter sports programs. Sixth grade girls and eighth grade boys both won the basketball championship. At the high school level, the girls' basketball won the NJIC National Division and the NJIC Conference Championship. Individual awards went to First Team All-Division Alyssa Craigwell, Mia Cruz, and Olivia Buckingham. Second Team All-Division Ava Diadetta, Katie Schneider. An honorable mention went to Angie Ledesma. The ice hockey team won the McMullen Cup Championship with individual recognitions of First Team All-Division Aiden Stam, who was also recognized as the MVP of the McMullen Cup Games. An honorable mention to Ian Foo. Cheerleading team finished first place in the Valley Cheer Competition at Wayne Valley, in the BCSBHC Cheer Competition, also in the Gold Rush Cheer Competition at Northern Valley Old Topan, in the Mustang Mania Cheer Competition, and in the Impact Cheer and Dance at Brookdale for first place in the Group Two All-Music Championship. Individual awards were given to Ava Coraz as the NCA All-American and Leadership Award, and Abigail Jones got the NCA All-American. Girls' swimming team got an individual award for Second Team All-Division, went to Renee Kim. Girls' bowling, First Team All-Conference, went to Paige Williams. Boys' basketball team, First Team All-Division, Chris, uh-oh, Pose Gay. Second Team All-Division AJ Concepcion, an honorable mention to Ronan Young. Boys' bowling, honorable mention Gio Guervera. And sportsmanship award went to Harsh Sangvi. The wrestling team, First Team All-Division Santino Leone. Second Team All-Division Jacob Orlando, CJ Kuduski, Mike Munoz, Aiden Mortarano. Honorable mention Daniel Rogers. CJ Kuduski won the district champion and sixth place in the region, and Santino Leone won third place in the district. Excellent accomplishment by our winter sports. Congratulations.
Thank you, Christina. Congratulations to all the athletes. There's no technology, no communications, no sir. Public forum?
Why, thank you, Ms. Judy.
This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Secaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous, mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they can be personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the matter informally. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Lisa Snedeker?
Hi, Lisa Snedeker, 168 Huber Street. I actually work for the town, I think most of you know that. And one thing that's been happening a lot lately is there are so many events happening at the same time between the town or even just between the schools. I just want everybody to know that we keep a calendar, and right on it, I mean, my email's on there and everything, I'm really accessible. If you can't get me, you can get her, and she can get me. But because there's too many things, and you know, we all want to support each other both ways, you know? And anything to do with the children, you'll know that, this town is, you know, so far behind everything. So I just wanted to see if there's a way that something can go out that, just check and see, because there are so many things happening at the same time, and then there are times that we have nothing at all going on where something might be a little bit more favorable. And the second thing is, I'm also with the Social Services Department, and we do a lot for low-income people in the town, and uniforms. Every year, I know that I send it, I think I send it to you, Grace, and we send it out, but if somebody had put up on Facebook, of course, I always see it up there, what can I do with my uniforms? But we put it out there, but they said maybe go through the PTA or something, and maybe we could do a school drive or something, because we have people asking every day. And, you know, kids grow out of them. I know you need something to do with them, and there are people that can use them. So if there's some way we could work with the PTA clothing drive, something like that. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll get in touch with you. Okay? Okay, you're welcome. Tracy Rubin?
Did not plan to come up here twice. I just wanted to say thank you about integrating books back into the classroom. I didn't quite get what you said about the Media Center. I don't know if I can email you about that later, if you can speak on that now. But again, thank you. I appreciate you listening and then you actually responding in a positive way. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tracy. Do you want to speak, or we...
Again, I just said that the tangible items, not only the PDFs, are going to be reintroduced into the classrooms, and that we are establishing the collection of classroom-studied novels, which would be available in the Media Center.
But not additional books like Incirculation with like a system in place for the...
I have an answer to that. I'll get in touch with you.
All right, no problem.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'm sorry. And finally, Anthony Grineer, is it? Grineer.
Good evening, all. My name is Anthony Grineer. I live at 798 Fish Street in Secaucus, and I have a school-aged child. I attended the board's meeting last month when Carrie Goldstuck gave a wonderful presentation about inclusion and integration in our classrooms. That presentation was excellent and was spot-on in the educational standpoint. Not to mention, for many children, an integrated and inclusive classroom is the appropriate placement in the federally mandated least restrictive environment. One thing that was not said in the presentation was how implementing these inclusive and integrating classrooms will reduce the HIB reports that you all deal with every month. A more informed and exposed population leads to less bullying because the children are no longer looked at as different. Segregating the children, like your program currently does, fosters a sense of us and them. As history has taught us, segregation has never been a winning strategy in education. This summer, the board touted receiving a $500,000 federal diversity, equity, and inclusion grant. Additionally, the New Jersey Department of Education recently announced a proposed 19.71% increase in the 2024-2025 state aid funding to Secaucus, amounting to an additional $619,000, which obviously this board knows all about. With that said, give Ms. Goldstuck every cent that she requests. She is great at what she does, and she will revamp your special education program into what it needs to be, because at this moment, it is woefully deficient. My wife and I have a child with disabilities. Despite it being this board's legal obligation to provide her with a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, my child is currently receiving no education and no services through the Secaucus District. Despite Ms. Goldstuck working with us to establish an appropriate placement, this board's attorney has not agreed to have a meeting with us to come to a final resolution. Because, see, the appropriate and least restrictive environment for my child is, in fact, an integrated and inclusive classroom, which Secaucus does not currently have for her age group. My wife and I have been going back and forth with Ms. Goldstuck for weeks, and yet the district attorney continues to modify any agreement that we put forth, and then continues to ignore our request to meet with the attorney to hash out these problems. It is your legal obligation to provide my child with an education, which she is not getting at this point. It is your legal obligation to provide her with a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment, which she is not getting and you are failing miserably at. I stand here before you to ask that you tell the district attorney that is working on my case to call me and to have a meeting for that we can hash this out. It is taking way too long. This meeting needs to happen before the end of the month for that my child can start receiving an education and the related services that she is entitled to, and for the Secaucus can be compliant with the law. I'm happy to talk to any one of you at this meeting to make this happen. When any of you talk to me, I'll be right there. Thank you.
Thank you. We will certainly look into everything that you said, and I will be in touch. We have to unfortunately go into executive session. We don't normally do that, but we have to this evening, but I will be in touch. I will get your contact information after the meeting. Okay, sure. Board member comments? No? I have something. I just don't remember where I wrote it, so I'll just wing it. I just wanted to also say thank you to Grace and her staff for all of your hard work with the budget. I know that that was very difficult, and we're very lucky to have you, so thank you very much. Congratulations to all the honorees here this evening and to the athletes on their accolades as well. And once again, congratulations to the cast of the Adams family. They did a phenomenal job. Thank you.
I have a question. Steven, would it be helpful if we leave these at our seats so that we have them for the next time?
Yes.
Yeah?
They're gonna be collected.
Okay. Thank you. I don't want to waste paper.
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session?
We'll be reopening public session.
There's a resolution to be acted upon by the board. It's going to require someone to move this motion and a second before it can be voted upon.
There's a resolution to be acted upon by the board. It's going to require someone to move this motion and a second before it can be voted upon. Resolution is to place an employee whose name is on file on administrative leave with pay pending an investigation.
I make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Mr. Brockletta? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Dillonbray? Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.